9:11 a.m. Madam Clerk, roll call.
You want me to proceed with the roll call first before the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, my first meeting, look at that, I already messed up. So I should follow this, follow what it says here, correct? Okay. Commissioner Blanca, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we don't have an invocation this morning?
No.
Okay.
This is a special meeting.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Vice Mayor Rhonda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Yes, present.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda?
Item three, citizen presentations. Any citizen who would like to address the commission at this moment? Our presentation, Madam Mayor.
Next item on the agenda, please.
Item four, under new business agenda items. Item four A, oath of office of incoming Mayor Rhonda A. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And the oath will be administered by the Office of the City Clerk. Please join me in the front. Please raise your hand, right hand and feet back for me. I, Rhonda Rodriguez.
Uh, Rhonda Rodriguez.
Sovereign swear.
Sovereign swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States of America.
And will obey the laws of the United States of America.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of West Miami.
Of the city of West Miami.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of the Mayor.
The duties of the Office of the Mayor.
Of the city of West Miami.
Of the city of West Miami.
So, so thank God. Congratulations. Mayor, and yes, of course, if you'd like to.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Rhonda. Rhonda, can I have three mayors, three past mayors?
Remember, after a great woman had a baby. Gravy. All right, bake your pace. Cheese. Now's your time, oh, mayor. Family, family, of course. You'll remember, you'll remember this moment.
She wanted to say the pictures for another day, because I saw it in because she came dressed for her relay at school, so she wasn't really dressed as one of her pictures, but we'll do that. Okay. Now could I invite the three former mayors to come up here with me? This is a special moment. We're done, we're done.
We're done.
I know you did.
I know, you woke up really early. The cookies. Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
The Commissioner is asking, where are the cookies?
Next meeting, sir. This meeting, you brought pastelito and.
Yeah, yeah, I already invited you.
Breakfast is on Commissioner Suarez this morning, everyone.
You're very welcome, you're very welcome to be here.
Okay. Madam Clerk, shall we proceed? Actually, Madam Clerk, I would like to take Item C out of order, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item four C, discussion and possible appointment of commission members by Mayor and City Commission.
Well, as you all know, my being elevated to mayor has left an opening on our dais for a new Commissioner. So with that said, I would like to open up the table for input from my colleagues on Item C.
Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second.
Took the words, took the words right out of my mouth.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's what I was gonna say.
Let me make a comment about that.
Please do.
He is a very well, he's a very well-educated person. He's in his career to be a lawyer, I hope he will be a great lawyer. And he has been very active in the city activities, especially with the hurricane, helping the residents. And he always has been very involved in the commission's activities. And he is a perfect person in this case for this position, I think.
Commissioner?
I would like to say something else to, regards to that. It's a great honor and a privilege to be able to have Eric Diaz-Padrón come up here and join us. I've known him since he was a small boy. I've seen him grow up. I know his family, his father, his siblings. And as Commissioner Suarez stated, it's all a very positive life that he's had, and getting better. I think that he would be a great addition to this commission, I'm looking forward to working with him. I think he's gonna bring new perspective, new ideas, to help us move along the city of West Miami. So I, in the best tradition that we've had here in this commission, being a small city and not being able to, to, to have elections, we've had a tradition here of appointing great people to come and represent us, like the late Sergio Bonich. Sergio served us, I believe he was appointed twice, and he served with great, you know, dignity and honor for the city of West Miami. So in this case, we're doing the same, and, and we have a, a, a perfect person to come in and take on that tradition. So I'm very honored that Eric is gonna be joining us here, so, thank you.
Mayor, may I add something?
Absolutely.
And I like you residents, you are here and whatever number of residents watching. And the Mayor Rhonda Rodriguez, his business, his career, has been in the IT and T, I mean, cybernetic, she's a cybernetic person. She has been always in internet, so she flies in that cloud, she's a cybernetic person now. But I'm very happy, even I am not younger in this commission, I am very happy to add to this appointment, that we're going to have an educated millennium in the commission, which is Eric Diaz-Padrón, our nominee.
Commissioner, you actually stole.
So we are going to have, for a cybernetic lady, so a very cybernetic millennium too.
You stole my words, in a sense. What I was going to say is, Commissioner Blanca, the person that you're recommending, I'm very happy to see that, because what Eric is going to do, he's gonna bring in fresh, new, young, younger ideas. Not that we're old, but I like the fact that the next generation is coming up, the younger generation. So that pleases me very well, your nomination. And also Eric knows a lot of people, has a lot of connections in Tallahassee and Washington. He's very connected politically, so I feel that his knowledge of politics will bring a lot to the table. So I, I'm, I'm happy with your nomination, Commissioner, thank you. Anybody else? Madam Clerk?
Would you like me to call the vote?
Yes, please. Is there any, any other discussion, any of the comments? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Welcome to our cloud.
And Mr. Diaz-Padrón will be sworn in into office. Oath administered by the City Clerk, witnessed by the City Attorney. Please raise your hand, right hand and feet back for me. I, Eric Diaz-Padrón. Sovereign swear. That I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States of America.
Yes.
And of the state of Florida. That I will, in all respects. Observe the provisions of the Charter.
The provisions of the Charter.
And the ordinances of the city of West Miami.
And the ordinances of the city of West Miami.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the Office of the City Commissioner.
The Office of the City Commissioner.
Of the city of West Miami.
Of the city of West Miami. So hope you got it.
Congratulations. Congratulations, you can speak now. Thank you.
Peter.
A picture, a picture, sure.
Do they have you in the center?
No.
Oh, yeah. I would like to meet you, actually.
Pictures?
Cheese, please.
How does it feel, Commissioner?
It has a little bit of a, I think he's been sitting here a while.
No, he took his chair with him.
Well.
Madam Mayor?
It, it.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If I may, just quickly say some words.
Absolutely.
Um, I'm very glad that I have gained the confidence of this commission, of this commission individually. I look forward to serving all of you, I really do, and supporting your initiatives that you've started over the years. I'll have more to say at a later date, I'm still processing, but thank you so much, and I hope to make my community proud.
Thank you, sir.
Sitting up here.
Would anyone else like to speak? In the pub room, in the audience, anyone else? No? Yes, no? Okay. Madam Clerk, shall we proceed with the order of the agenda, please?
Yes, if you would like to, we would like to proceed then with Item B, four B, which is the appointment of Office of the Vice Mayor by Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Obviously, with my moving up to mayor, there is also now a vice mayor that needs to be appointed. So with that said, I am going to once again open up the table for my colleagues for discussion.
I would like to make a nomination.
Yes, please, sir, go right ahead.
I would like to nominate for Vice Mayor Commissioner Luciano Suarez. The hardest-working Commissioner in De County. I think that Luciano Suarez deserves this position, for the many, many hours that he's toiled to represent this city. I personally know that. I believe that his effort, his devotion, going to Tallahassee, speaking to legislators time and time again. I don't think there's another member of this commission that has toiled harder in that regard to obtain the money that we need for our water system. So I believe that he is deserving of it, and it's my honor to nominate him for Vice Mayor. I could say a lot more things, but that's the first thing that comes to mind.
Thank you, thank you.
I second.
He, he, Commissioner Suarez has always been a point of inspiration to me, and I've learned quite a bit from Commissioner Suarez. All good, all good, not bad. So again, it's an honor to nominate him, and.
Thank you. Well, if you're going to keep telling good things, keep telling them.
And I second.
I think I ran out of good things.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioners. Now it's my turn.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Blanes.
It's my turn, I just said it's my turn to speak. Can I speak before you go?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Blanes, I agree with your nomination. As, since I've sat up here, I have witnessed your Vice, Vice Mayorship and also Commissioner Blanca's, and I have not seen my colleague here in action as Vice Mayor, so. And a lot of you don't know, when we go to events, as Commissioner Blanes says, Commissioner Suarez is very, very, very well-known in the community. On my name tag, I obviously put my name, but above it, I put, "I'm with Luciano." Because everyone knows him, he's very well-liked, he does bring a lot to the table, and I do appreciate everything he has done for the city in the past, his hard work. So I am in agreement with your nomination, sir. Anyone else?
If I may just quickly echo those points, I think we're gonna have, I think we're gonna have a great Mayor-Vice Mayor team, with Luciano as Vice Mayor, and I look forward to, again, serving with you two as the top roles.
And I do look forward to you, as long as you accept this nomination, I do look forward to you at my side.
After these, after these nine things, can you say no, you have to say yes?
Well, Mr. Vice Mayor, the next, according to Robert's rule, you have to call the question to.
Yes. Please, please call the vote, Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have the motion by Commissioner Blanes, second by Commissioner Blanca. On the motion, Commissioner Diaz-Padrón, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes, I mean Suarez.
You have seen.
And, and Mayor Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Let me think about this.
All right.
Yes, 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 and yes.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Commissioner Hiccox, thank you very much, Hiccox, very much. Cabidán, thank you very much. You go there too?
Let me.
No, we don't have to go ahead and do that.
No, yeah.
No, keep going.
No, keep going, okay.
Keep going.
Yes, sir, Vice Mayor. Keep going.
Okay. Would you please set that stage for the record?
No, it's just.
Mr. Attorney?
No, no, there's no issue, there was a question whether or not the Vice Mayor has to be sworn in. It has been elected by the commission, so there's no need for him to be sworn in. It'd need to be a ceremony, that would be fine, and that would be taking place, I believe, on Monday.
Okay, well, we will discuss that, that's on the agenda, sir. Okay, Madam Clerk, shall we proceed with the agenda, please?
Yes, Item four D, selection of date for installation ceremony by Mayor and City Commission.
And I just want to take a moment, because I know there's some of us here, with your permission, there's some of us that have to return to work, so if anybody needs to leave, I completely understand. Because I know a lot of you all have to go to work, so with that said, please, thank you, bye, thank you for being here. Okay, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, we were.
Yes, it's the selection of date for installation ceremony by Mayor and City Commission.
Okay, so I'm going to open up the table for discussion. Any discussion on this, any comments, any? Okay. No? I'm looking towards Monday, if that's okay with everyone.
Monday the fourth?
I'd like to celebrate, you know, as quickly as possible, I think we're all due the celebration. Yes, sir, Monday the fourth.
And what time you want to do it?
Uh, I'd like to do it at seven, I know it's a, it's a school night, it's a work, it's a workday, so seven o'clock, that way we can have time to, to convene and celebrate.
That'd be great.
With a little ceremony downstairs.
It's okay for me, I think.
Monday, so Monday the fourth, at seven P.M.
Right.
I'm gonna ask for the administration's input, is that okay with everyone?
That's fine, that's fine.
Mr. Attorney?
We aim to please, Madam Mayor.
Okay. It's not, is enough time for you all to do what you have to do?
It will be.
Gotti, enough time? Madam Clerk?
Yes, I'll be, I will advertise, I notice this meeting today.
Okay, so is there any opposition to Monday the fourth at seven P.M. for our installation ceremony?
Perfect, for me, it's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Item four E, request for presentation of key to the city toward going mayor, Mayor Eduardo Muñoz. This request was sponsored by Mayor Rhonda Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Mayor, after your, after our February twentieth meeting, I was looking forward to doing this as soon as possible at our next meeting, which would have been on the sixth. However, we are en route to Tallahassee on the sixth to try to secure some money for much-needed potable water, as you well know, sir. So we won't be here on the sixth, so in keeping with having to, wanting to do this as soon as possible in your honor, is the next meeting of the twentieth okay with you, sir? And with that said, I'll open it up for.
Well, thank you. I don't want to intervene, but I think you, you need to ask the rest of the board for permission.
Well, I will, but I have to ask you first, I do, but I have to ask you first, if you're available.
I'm not moving in West Miami.
You're not available.
I'm not moving in West Miami, I'm here.
Perfect.
And I will be here.
Perfect, so with that said.
As long as you need me.
Perfect, thank you, sir. With that said, any discussion, comments?
Madam Mayor, if you would like.
Yes, ma'am.
We have two scheduled meetings in March, March sixth and March twentieth. March sixth is the next commission meeting that we have, scheduled meeting.
Well.
That was canceled.
That meeting.
We, we will, I will be getting to that.
That meeting has not been canceled yet. So maybe this is the moment for.
And which I was going to go there, because we, last I heard, we are tra, is that a confirmed trip?
We are confirmed for Tallahassee, yes.
Is this the time to cancel the meeting of March sixth?
It would be appropriate, yes, so we can notice on the marquee, on the website, as customarily.
Perfect, so, colleagues, some of us will be in Tallahassee on March the sixth. Again, trying to, it is the second week, no, that's the first week of, of legislation session, so we feel that's the appropriate time to go and try to secure money for much-needed potable water.
So we will have no quorum?
That is correct.
So a motion to cancel the meeting of March sixth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, are all in favor, do you want me to call the vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, we will not have a meeting on March the sixth, so the next meeting is March the twentieth, and I feel that's an appropriate time to honor our mayor. And do I have any, any discussion, any opposition, are we all in favor? Yes? Madam Manager, Madam Clerk, is that, we are, are you all okay?
You're in favor for March twentieth.
We are.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would you please be here on March twentieth for a presentation of the key to your fine city? Vice Chairwoman?
If you allow us, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely.
We cannot allow you to close this meeting without saying a few things.
Thank you.
Number one, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the new Vice Mayor, and congratulations to Eric Diaz-Padrón, very well deserved. But mostly, I want to commend, the time will come, Mayor Eddie Muñoz, for his many years of services to the city of West Miami. I want to commend everyone, the administration, all the departments, because when you see in the city that you love, in the city that made me who I am today, when you see a transition of the nature of what I have seen here this morning, you have set an example to everyone of how government works. And seeing you all working together for our own benefit, the residents of West Miami, I have to say that I am very proud of all of you.
Thank you, thank you.
You know that I always, I've always been a man of very few words, and today is one of those moments. First of all, I was hoping that you had an invocation today, because I was ready for that invocation. And I think you have made a great choice. I think this board is blessed. The only thing that I'm gonna ask you is to, one thing that, while I was sitting there, I always strive, is to stay united, we're gonna have differences, but stay united for the betterment of West Miami. And if you keep that in mind, and I don't want to get sentimental about it, but I always come to some words that my dad taught me when I first came into the commission. And he said, "Son, the minute you walk into that commission, you take your ego and you put it in your pocket, and everything will be fine." Congratulations, carry on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk? Proceed with the agenda, please.
Yes, item 4F, request for authorization...
Yes, sir.
Before we go to the business agenda, I'd like to, can I say something?
Absolutely.
I think we, in the name of myself and the table, we thank you very much, the residents present here today, this morning, because it's a very nice group, and we appreciate your coming to this moment. And second, we are, have been blessed for many years to have here a resident. Her name is Rebecca Sosa, when she moved to West Miami. And now, then she become a commissioner here. I remember when a friend of mine was with a picture of Rebecca, and I remember I was in a restaurant, he told, "Luciano, you know Rebecca Sosa?" I said, "Yes." "Why?" "Look, she's running for commissioner in West Miami." "Oh, I didn't know that." So, I called her father, "Pepeing, Rebecca is running for commissioner." "Yes, she's going to run for commissioner." And eventually, she was a commissioner, and she was a mayor, and now she is of the legend in De County politics years, because Rebecca Sosa is a great name, very respected all over the county, and in the state too. And we have been blessed to have Rebecca here as a resident, as a mayor, and today, your presence here, Rebecca, is really appreciated. I think we are very lucky to have you. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much, sir. Madam Clerk, proceed with the agenda, please.
Yes, item 4F, request for authorization to approve the purchase of windows for the city holding second-floor building as part of the mitigation settlement involving FEMA funds, city manager, director of public works.
See, it's not all fun and celebration, sometimes there is some work.
Thank you. As part of the damages caused by Hurricane Irma, and part of the mitigation program provided to us by FEMA under the Statford Act, which is called mitigation $406, we are eligible for projects that basically are aimed towards hardening our structures. That said, I believe Mr. Penna can address you, if you wish to hear from him, on the plans to change out the windows, because we did have water damage as a result of the winds during the storm, and we are eligible, we have been reimbursed for these $406, but what we did with that money is we paid into the credit line as a good-faith effort, so that the bank where we have that credit line, that loan that we took out to pay for the FEMA damages, so that they could see there was good faith on our part, and we have paid $90,000 into that credit line. That being said, we do expect a larger reimbursement from FEMA, and right now, we would recommend that you fund this activity out of your reserves, general fund reserves, and when the money comes back from FEMA, which we've already paid for this category into the loan, we will replenish our general fund reserves. That would be our recommendation on how to proceed with that.
Mr. Penna?
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner-elect, or appointed. The second-floor windows here in the commission chamber, as Ms. Aguilar spoke, were damaged during the hurricane. We've had, in our capital improvement plan for years, to replace them, however, we've never had the funding for it. As part of the $406 money, we're entitled to harden the structure with new windows. We solicited bids from eight different companies, two of them supplied us with quotes, and we have a local company here in town that's going to be the low provider, which is the amount that's shown on the resolution this morning.
Ms. Penna, I like the fact that we are using a business, you're saying locals in the city of West Miami?
Yes, South Windows.
I like that. And these are obviously, so basically, we're getting, we've needed this for quite some time, but now it's going to be paid for?
That's correct.
By FEMA, which...
Actually, it's already been paid for.
It's already been paid. We paid it into the credit line as part of our loan obligation, so that the bank saw that we are serious about paying into the principal balance as quickly as possible. When we draw down the next two large categories that we have outstanding, that's pending final review by FEMA, when that money comes down, we will replenish the general fund with that amount of money.
Go back to replenishing the reserves.
Correct.
Comments? Discussion? Anyone?
No, I think this is, because the windows have a problem before, and after the hurricane, that became a critical thing.
Well, the regular...
And now, they are under the process to be, and the money will come back, so we will pay the general fund for this.
Yes.
Well, I think I make a motion, because anyway, we have to make capital improvement.
Madam Clerk, could you...
Yes, Madam Mayor, item 4G, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to accept a proposal from South Windows for a total amount of $15,750, from South Windows and Doors, as the lowest responsible bidder, and set funds to come from general fund reserve account, providing for an emergency timeline as dictated by FEMA, providing for funds to be encumbered prior to March 10th, 2019, providing an effective date, mayor and city commission.
Motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Yes. Commissioner Blanis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz Padron? Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Next item?
Item 6, good of the order.
Does anyone have anything for the good of the order?
Item 5, actually.
Well, I do.
Corrected for the record.
Everyone's here heard that we are having our installation ceremony on Monday, March 4th, at 7:00 PM, so you're all invited, everyone is invited. Please join us for that celebratory occasion. Thank you all for being here. It's been an honor to sit here, it's my first time as mayor, with all of you. I look forward to the very bright future that we will have together, and then we're going to save everything else to be said on Monday night. Anybody else? Madam Clerk? Meeting is adjourned. Motion to adjourn?
Are all in favor to adjourn?
Motion.
So, I ended it with a mistake, I started with a mistake, I ended it with a mistake. I'll get better, I promise.
It is okay. Consistency.
I am consistency, right?
No mistakes.
No mistakes.
All in favor to adjourn?
Learning curve, no mistakes. Thank you all.
Please join us for some refreshments.